Hey, take Bray with you.
Yeah, take her to her seat. We got things to do.
Item two point two, declaration and roll call vote of subjects discussed in closed meeting. I'm looking for a motion to come out of close.
I make a motion to adopt the certificate of closed meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Lau, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Dobson?
Yeah.
Ms. Diggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Gibbs?
Yes. Item two point three, approval of personnel action. I'm seeking a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the personnel action discussed in closed meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item two point four, seeking a motion for the adoption of the superintendent resolution and roll call vote.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to appoint division superintendent for a term commencing July first, 2026 as follows. Resolution stating, whereas Dr. David S. Daniel was appointed division superintendent of schools for a term commencing July first, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2026, and whereas the school board wishes to appoint Dr. Daniel as division superintendent for a new term commencing July first, 2026, and ending June 30th, 2030, at an annual salary of $156,560. Now therefore be it resolved that Dr. Daniel is appointed division superintendent of schools for a new term commencing July first, 2026, and ending June 30th, 2030, and be it further resolved that the chairman and the clerk are authorized to execute an employment agreement with Dr. Daniel affecting these changes.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. Do we have any discussion? There being none, Ms. Lau, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Dobson?
Yeah.
Ms. Diggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Gibbs?
Yes. Thank you very much. We are now adjourned from closed session.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you for coming to the October 21st, 2025 Matthews County School Board Regular Monthly Meeting. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Lau, may we have the roll call vote, please? Roll call, please.
Present.
Here.
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 Present, thank you. Item one point four, I'm seeking a motion for the approval of the agenda additions and deletions.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. Do we have any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one point five, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2025, rescheduled from September 16th, 2025, closed and regular monthly meetings, monthly claims, MCCS Bush request, and amended 2025, 2026 academic calendar as presented on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Is there any discussion? I would just like to remind the board members that, Ms. Diggs, you will be reviewing the monthly claims in, well, you did, October 20th. I will be doing November 17th, and Mr. Dobson, you have December 15th. Any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item one point six, Matthews County School Board Governance, Norms, and Protocols. Mrs. Hodges, would you be so kind as to read out?
Yes. And for those who are new to attending board meetings, our governance norms and protocols are what we as a board agree to as far as how we will work with each other and work with the community. The two I'm reading, the first one is communication between and among board members. Board members are encouraged to speak via phone or face-to-face. Communications between board members and the superintendent. Board members are encouraged to communicate to the superintendent via phone calls, text, or email based upon the topic.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges. Item two, the V S B A Academy Awards presented by Dr. Daniel.
All right, so we have two levels of awards from the V S B A. So the first award of recognition is 15 credits per year from that certificate. And so that certificate is presented to Dr. Gibbs and Ms. Diggs. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Diggs, congratulations. Our next level is Award of Excellence, that is 48 credits in two years. And these recipients receive a certificate and a silver pin. That first recipient is Ms. Hodges. Congratulations. I'll just do me.
Okay.
Okay. And spoiler alert, the second recipient of the 48 credits in two years of service is me, Dr. David Daniel. Thank you for clapping.
Thank you, Dr. Daniel. Item three, questions or comments from the school board student representative. Ms. Ward, you're up.
Thank you. Matthews Elementary School kicked off our fall fundraiser on October 13th. We are working with School Store, which is an online platform that gives money to M E S when participants sign up to shop at retail stores like Walmart and over 300 other stores where you likely already shop. In October, M E S started a worldwide, a school-wide reading initiative called Flashlight Fridays. This is a fun way for students to take a 10- to 15-minute break to read. And what could be more exciting than using a flashlight to read your favorite book? We love Flashlight Fridays. On Friday, October 10th, the Matthews County Fire Department visited M E S. Pre-K, first, second, and third grade had the opportunity to see fire trucks and learn about fire safety. Our kindergarten friends got to walk to the fire station on Thursday. M E S would like to thank the Matthews County Fire Department for the treat bags they gave to each student. We are still in the installation phase of M T S S. On October 13th, we had the opportunity to use the new data protocol sheet to analyze data from last year. Today began our first round of grade-level-based data talks. Using data from the most recent vowels test, teachers were able to draw conclusions and make next-step plans to help students close gaps in reading. M E S is having a blast with Spirit Week. It is fun to see all the smiles and excitement as students and teachers show their school spirit. There are many things happening at Thomas Hunter Middle School. Students have been busy working on new skills in all classes and really pushing themselves to become better students. Here's a quick rundown of upcoming events. October 20th was the start of Spirit Week. October 21st was the benchmark assessment for Math VII. The 22nd is the benchmark assessment for English VI. And the 23rd is the benchmark assessment for English VII. Also, October 23rd is Family Movie Night. It's $5 per family and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The 24th is the Math VI Benchmark Assessment. Also, the 24th is the Homecoming Parade and Matthews High School Marching Band Field Show. The 27th is the start of Red Ribbon Week, and the 31st, there's a Matthews High School band performance at THMS Field. Thank you to Ms. Burrows for her support of our S C A in organizing the movie night. Please come out and support our S C A, Thursday, October 23rd at 6:00. It's a family movie night and it's $5 per family. We're also excited to have our students participate in science field trips with VIMS and the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Thank you to Ms. Sowers for getting this together for THMS students. F Y I for Thomas Hunter Middle School families, we're having a parent-teacher conference day November 3rd. Please contact the school if you would like to talk to your child's teacher. Our fundraiser has come into a close, but if any family would like to purchase something, there's still time. Please check the Money Dolly app for items. Thank you to all families that have supported our school. Here is the high school's updates. October has been a fun month at Matthews High School as fall sports are in full swing. On October 6th, we hosted the grand opening of the Brew and Gold Cafe. Thank you to everyone who took time to attend the event. Juniors and seniors took the ASFAB test in the beginning of October, and many students also took the P S A Ts. Our volleyball team held their annual Dig Pink game on October 14th to raise money for breast cancer research. And our marching Blue Devils did a terrific job of playing the National Anthem at the game. Thank you to everyone who came out to support the event. It's Homecoming Week at Matthews High School, and students have gone all out to show their spirit. Spirit Week will culminate with the pep rally Friday afternoon, followed by the Homecoming Parade and the field show showcasing our marching Blue Devils band when the Homecoming King and Queen will be crowned. We will also be featuring a car show and trunk-or-tree on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the Matthews High School parking lot, followed by the Homecoming Dance at 7:00 p.m. There will be a winter sports meeting on November 5th at 6:30 p.m. for anyone interested in participating in a winter sport. Our music department is selling tickets for their Dinner and a Show fundraiser on November 13th from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., including entertainment by the Jazz Band Orchestra and musicians from the Matthews Music Department. Tickets are available in the main office. The music department is also having their annual fruit sale right now. Orders can be placed through any member of the Blue Devil or Seahawk Band until November 16th. Thank you for everyone who continues to support all the many clubs, activities, and events at Matthews High School.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. I have one question. What is the name of the movie that is being shown?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Perhaps someone in the audience? Hocus Pocus. Thank you.
I have a question as well regarding the fruit sales, the band fruit sales. There used to be a website you could go on to order them. Is that still, and I don't, maybe on our, the board website, the school's website? But I didn't, was wondering what that might be.
Um, I actually don't know. It might be on the website.
Okay, thank you.
It's a fabulous fundraiser, always is. All right, moving on to item four. We have the H E S School Facility Management update. We welcome Alexis Scinella, the H E S Regional Manager, to give us a brief presentation. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. Hi, I'm Alexis Scinella, as all of you've heard. Do I use this to forward and back mine? Okay, great. So again, my name's Alexis. Just a little bit about me. My accent is from New Jersey, so I'm actually from above the Mason-Dixon line. I moved down to Virginia about three years ago. I started at Avret University with H E S Facilities Management, and from there, I became an account manager in Chesterfield. And from there, they made me regional because they just liked me that much, I guess. And now I oversee Powhatan, Matthews, Amelia, and Chesterfield. So that's a little bit about my background. Today, I just wanted to kind of give an overview. I know I missed you guys last month. I apologize for that. So it's a lot of updates following the summer that we had. So we're going to go over staffing, just some op stuff, and then just some quality results that we've had since the start of July. Where do I point it?
Yeah, turn it on and off.
No, it was on. Oh. There we go. All right, so staffing levels. Since the start of July 1, we were able to hire 10 custodians that were not already on the incumbent list. Currently, right now, we're down about 1.63. And we've got two candidates that Jaclyn, the account manager, is bringing in this week for interviews, and hopefully that will bring us to above fully staffed. As far as retention goes, since the beginning of the contract, we've only had about three or four incumbents that have stayed with us from the previous employment when we did the transfer from Matthews to H E S Facilities. So since then, we've turned over about four hires, just addressing through, you know, resignations and termination for standards and such like that. We did recognize some staffing challenges out here, specifically with local trade job competition, like in the geographic factors. So we did expand our outreach through referral programs. So we kind of upped the, you know, amount for if you have somebody that you know and you want to bring them in as a custodian, if they work for me for 90 days, I'll give you X amount of money. We heightened that retention program. And then I also, you know, we put in for some community signage and postings as well because we are having more luck getting postings from places like mail post offices and stuff like that. New leadership, we brought on Jaclyn Jerabeck. She actually came from West Point Schools prior to being with us. And prior to that, she actually worked at a hotel in Richmond that she actually worked at a hotel in Richmond that she ran the cleaning crew for, for years beyond that. And she's done a really great job thus far. She is really great with the team members that we have here. She's real strict with her program, and she likes things a certain way, and she has definitely been an asset to H E S. This is just a, I want to go back. Just a quick snapshot of currently the people and the custodians that we have at each school. If you guys wanted to take a look at that, we've got four at the high school, two at the middle, and three at the elementary, and then one person we use as a floater, kind of to bridge that gap if we have any callouts or anything like that. Financials and equipment, since, again, the start of the contract, we've invested about forty-six thousand dollars in new equipment since July one in infrastructure and, you know, machinery, including Onyx auto scrubbers, burnishers, the Kaivac restroom system, which is like a bathroom, you know, power washer. You've got all-new chemical distribution systems in all of your custodial closets that include a widespread of Spartan chemicals that we've introduced and trained the staff on using in throughout your buildings. Tools and supplies, you also have new maid carts, you have new trashcans, you have new, a new microfiber system, new mops, all new products so that the custodians have, you know, brand-new stuff that they're working with. Training and development, we continuously are training. Jaclyn actually held a safety meeting today at two P M. We do those monthly. H E S is really firm on our trainings and, you know, across the board to make sure that, you know, we have that accountability, to make sure that all of our staff are, you know, doing what we need to do. So since we've been here, H E S with Matthews, since we started our program, I, you know, from what we've seen, we've modernized the custodial program and the efficiency and the consistent cleaning quality overall. And we've been, since the summer, some big accomplishments that we did where the elementary and the high school gym floors got redone by an outside company that we use. Next year, hopefully, we'll do it by ourselves because Jaclyn and our team actually were trained after to do their own wood floors. So if anybody's been over to the high school lately and has seen the, you know, the floors in the hallways, that's our team doing it right up there in those pictures. Also, all of areas of V C T. were either stripped or top scrubbed to reset the floors district-wide. And then wax was also laid on all the new flooring that was installed to the middle school, you know, as the contractors finished that up. There are some areas, I do want to note, that we do end up want to go back, you know, either via winter or during certain breaks to kind of spruce up the floors. I know, you know, H E S kind of had an introduction in July one, so we kind of had a merger from, you know, incumbent to our staff, and then there was a training gap. So there are areas that is not completely up to my standard, at least. And Dr. Daniel and I did a walkthrough, and there's a couple of projects that I'm looking forward to getting done over the winter. Because cleaning and organization, if you look around in your custodial closets, too, it's a big thing. They wiped all of out, all out the old trash, and, you know, we cleaned them out from top to bottom, organized them the way that they need to be organized to run an efficient program. We also detail cleaned all the areas in your schools, following any construction or anything that had to get, had to get done as well. Again, just some pictures from the high school post, us redoing the floor. That was just refinishing with polyurethane. And this is at the elementary school, the front vestibule. They refinished that front star there and just wanted to showcase that as well. Just some challenges that we had along the way over the summer. There was a lot of renovation schedules that required some adjustments, but the team stayed flexible and we were able to be responsive to what, you know, the district needed. We did have some extreme summer heat this year and some A C. issues, so the humidity kind of got in the way and kind of set us back in some of the areas with the floors just because a lot of humidity does not do well when you're trying to dry wax on a floor. But the staff stayed and corrected and refinished areas as needed. The transition period that we had, again, full adoption of H E S procedures were taken on July one. So again, revert back to there's certain projects we want to get done. It's just the time that we had, we couldn't get everything done that, you know, I had originally, we originally would like to. Looking ahead from, you know, this summer and on, typically what happens, at least in the programs for floor care, they run on about a four-to-five-year program cycle. So each year, typically, twenty-five percent of the building is stripped down to the bone of the floors. And then after each summer, you know, a quarter of each of your buildings are getting fully stripped so that every four-to-five years, your, your floors are getting, you know, good as new, brand is, brand new, not just top scrubbed. After winter break closes up and we finish all of our projects, Jaclyn and the facility director have also been working close hand-in-hand to work on extra projects that are coming up through the year so that they can coordinate together to make sure that they're working together on those things, too. But yeah, so looking ahead, we're still continuing on investing training. We're still doing floor care training with the custodians. It's just a constant regurgitation, you know, we have new trainings every month. And then the quality assurance inspection results, I did want to put some of them in here, but we've only been in here for a few months, so it's not really showing the great data that I want to show you. The next time that I come here, I will have some data to show you. So because Jaclyn is, we do one-hundred to two-hundred inspections a month, and it just kind of shows the discrepancies that we're seeing, right? And giving us a grade based off of how we're doing. And then we also use that to compare that to the report cards that we're getting from you guys as well, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and making sure that we're hitting those marks together. But that's all I have for you. Those are the only updates. Just to say, I'm happy to be partnered with Matthews. It's been nothing but a delight working with your school district. You know, I feel very, you know, lucky to be a part of it. So that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Scinella. This was really helpful information. Members, do you have any questions, comments?
I wasn't sure if, if I heard you, do they work on the weekends? Did I hear you say you're going to have a project on the weekend, or did I misunderstand that?
So, no, they don't work on the weekends, like typically, but, you know, if I, if we decide, hey, we want to do a project, and there's a day off on Friday, and maybe we need to bring somebody in for overtime, just to, you know, get something spruced up that we want to, that we can't while the kids are here, we're going to do that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wonderful. I love the energy. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Just to add one other piece, I think we have a meeting scheduled for November eighteenth to kind of a broader collection of the H E S and Matthews County Schools teams to kind of talk through some of these projects and what's going well, what's, you know, what challenges, and looking at the financials and stuff. So kind of a, kind of a mid-year evaluation, five, six months into our partnership. So that's, that's coming up.
We call out the business value report, and we do that quarterly.
Quarterly.
Perfect. Just in time. Yes, Ms. Diggs.
One question, I'm, well, hats off, everything looks good.
Oh, thank you.
We appreciate you all. I don't know if this falls under your department, but do you all do any of the recycling as far as bottles or papers for classrooms?
We can if that's what the requirement of the district is, yes. If we are requirement, if the requirement of the district is to recycle, then yes, that's the program that we follow. We adopt whatever program the district wants us to adopt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for coming out. Thank you. Item five, student achievement. We have Mrs. Bray to talk to us about the pre-K Teachers for Tomorrow collaboration.
Good evening. I am very excited to be here talking about pre-K. I'm not sure if you've ever been in a preschool classroom, or if you have, if you've ever been in one in the months of August, September, October, it is probably unlike anything you've ever seen. I think I want to say everything they do is big. So maybe they're super sad because they're leaving their mom, so it's a big sad. Maybe they're super happy because their friend brought in, I don't know, special snack. Everything is just big for them, big emotions. And when things seem down and out for them, and it's a big sad, it's followed by a big happy. Ms. Judy always says, pre-K teacher Ms. Judy always says, "It's the best day ever." And I've kind of stolen that statement from her because I love it so much. A great example would be a student in pre-K said to me, "Ms. Bray, do you know how to tie your shoes?" And I said, "Yes, actually, I do know how to tie my shoes." And the child, big sad, "I don't know how to tie my shoes." And Ms. Judy said, "You know what? It's okay because you're going to learn." And so that big sad turned into jumping, "Yay, I'm going to learn to tie my shoes." And it's just the nature of the preschool class, it's always something amazing happening. So this summer, in August, we were at a principal's meeting, and Dr. Daniel said, you know, we've just gotten word that Head Start is not going to be in Matthews anymore. And there was this unspoken kind of panic in the room because from being at the high school, I knew that the high school students worked so closely in Ms. Hayes's class and her early childhood education classes worked with those preschool classes, and it was right next door and perfect in every way. And so I knew that and kind of panicked for a minute. Dr. Grieve was in the room, he panicked for a minute, and so we looked at each other with no words and kind of went like, "Ooh, ooh." And so then Dr. Daniel said, "I was wondering," and we were like, already worked it all out, and there were no words spoken because we knew that the absolute right thing to do was to partner with Matthews High School to allow those students to come into our pre-K class. And so I wanted to just tell you a little bit about the three, three classes that students at Matthews High School have to work with early childhood education. So Ms. Hayes has Intro to Early Childhood Education, and that is classroom-based, they stay with her. They learn things about the development of a child, they learn about self-esteem, learning just about guiding principals, helping children to grow and learn in a positive manner, in healthy, safe environments. And then talk a little bit about career development. If you go into early childhood education, what are some of the options that you have? She has two other classes, and they would be in sequence. Next, it would be Early Childhood Education I. and then Early Childhood Education II. And so her Early Childhood Education I. classes are coming into Matthews Elementary School not always, just they make appointments ahead of time. They've spent a lot of time early on in the classroom talking about lesson planning and more specific, not just overall, early childhood education, but more specific in how children or how a classroom would run. And so once they spend those couple of weeks, they periodically come in and visit the classroom and disperse. There are nine students right now, they disperse between our two pre-K classes, and that will go on all year. They, the other day, were here for the fire trucks, and I'll show you some pictures about that. It was just that they had scheduled that day, and it worked out beautifully because we had a great community activity planned. But the Early Childhood Education II., that is when those, it's two students, and they are coming in every other day on their block schedule, every other day, from eight oh five to eleven oh five, and they are completely immersed in the preschool classroom from breakfast all the way to lunch and everything in between. So they're getting center time, they're getting whole group time, they're getting story time, resource time, so much of, you know, most of the pre-K.'s day they're getting to experience, and it's just really been a super positive experience. The teachers, Ms. Hayes, had this quote that she wanted me to share. She said, "It is critical for my early childhood education students to have the opportunity to work and learn in the preschool classrooms at Matthews Elementary School as it affords them the opportunity for hands-on, works-based learning, which is a requirement for both early child education and services one and two courses. Under the supervision of Mrs. Emanuel, Mrs. Hurst, and Mrs. Drummond, these Matthews High School students are able to put content learned in my classroom into practice in addition to providing additional eye, additional eyes to monitor and help keep young children safe and engaged." Pre-K teacher Mrs. Drummond said, "These students are training to become teachers later in life, and it's giving them the opportunity to see what goes on day-to-day in the classroom. It gives the opportu, the students the opportunity to see if this, if education is a true passion for them." And then student Vanessa Boyd says, "One of the biggest lessons I've learned is that every kid is different in their own way. I love the environment and the teachers are awesome. Everyone is so nice and so kind." And so the students who go through all of these programs, they have the opportunity at the end to complete the pre-professional assessments and certification, which is an American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences National Industry Certificate, that they're able to achieve through going through these pro, these three courses. I would say that we are well blessed to be able to work in a community where we don't have problems, we solve them, because that could have been a major setback to those early childhood education classes. And so now, not just one pre-K class, which was Head Start benefits, but now our entire preschool at Matthews Elementary School benefit. And so I just wanted to share a couple of pictures, and I am super impressed that the pre-K teachers are able to snap pictures in the midst of doing everything that they do because they have an amazing skill of teaching a lesson. And so they have all these children gathered around them, and they're talking about whatever the topic is, and somebody begins to wander, and they never break eye contact with the class, but they're able to just say, "Oh, come out, you come over here and you be my friend," and they never miss a beat, and they were able to capture some of these amazing pictures, so I'm really impressed. But this is the entire class, the Early Childhood Education I. out with the fire trucks that came a couple of weeks ago.
So cute.
And then this one just shows, that's Vanessa Boyd working with the students, the two, the first two that you see there, she was reading them a story, and they had done a craft project, and then she got to go on a field trip to the pumpkin patch with them. So I don't know what's more fun, watching the students' excitement to see the high school students coming in, or the high school students excited to see the pre-K kids. It's a lot of fun. So I'm thankful for the opportunity. Do you have questions?
I just want to say it's the miracle of children working with children. We can't beat it. That's fabulous. Thank you, Mrs. Bray.
I do. Could you repeat again about the national certification you referenced? And I think you said there are three classes?
So, yes, so it's a series, and if you complete all three of these, so Intro to Early Childhood Education.
Right.
Which would be just the general overview. Early Childhood Education and Services I. and then II. And then you take the pre-professional assessments and certification, which is American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences, which is a national industry certification that helps students achieve a gradu, a graduation requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
So, but you know, with that, they would, that would also give them opportunity to pursue a career like as a teacher assistant or something like that.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is excellent.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bray.
All right, thank you. Do I leave this here?
Yes. We'll carry on with item five point two, STAR Data update from Dr. Daniel.
So a quick reminder about STAR reading, our STAR Data. So as part of our multi-tiered systems of supports, we have universal screening in reading and mathematics. So the, the STAR Data is a norm-referenced formative assessment. So it is not to be a cumulative, intensive assessment of what every kid sort of needed to know that year. It is a quick sort of snapshot. It's intended to be kind of a snapshot, relatively quick assessment to gauge where students are and how they are progressing. So I've broken out this year's fall data and sort of tried to lay it out because we're now beginning our second full year of STAR Data and that universal, universal screening assessment process. So I've broken it out in two different ways. So the, the first slide looks at grade level to grade level, so looking at that middle sort of set of columns is looking at last year's second grade and then this year's fall for second grade. And so it's looking at second grade, last year's second grade this year. And I would caution you all and anybody looking at this later to, if you look at the twenty-three, twenty-four sets of columns, that first year, we, we started on universal screening in, in the winter. And then STAR and Renaissance Learning, who does STAR, re-benchmarks. So we had to adjust our scores starting in the fall of twenty-twenty-four. So if you look at the numbers up there, you're going to look, "Oh, my gosh, like, second grade was at sixty-four and sixty-eight, and then the next year's second grade was at fifty-five and forty-two." That's because of the norm, that benchmark changed. So the criteria to score at benchmark was elevated. Okay, so we kept higher norms. Renaissance sort of lowered the bar with their renorming process post-COVID. So we kept the bar where it was, so we had fewer, fewer students performing at that level. And I think that was the right decision for us as we're having statewide conversations about increased cut scores on S O L.s. So while the numbers may not be flattering, I think they're truthful about where, where we sit right now. So looking at grades two through five, looking at our elementary school reading and looking at grade level to grade level, so you'll see as a comparison, looking at last year's second grade in the fall was at a thirty-eight on benchmark, and then this year was at twenty-eight. Couple pieces, again, to keep in mind, most of our cohorts are about between fifty and sixty students, between, most of them are about fifty-five to sixty. So every student is going to be a little over, just, or just a little under two percentage points. So every student is going to impact those percentage points. So every student is gonna impact those percentage points pretty significantly. So obviously, we're not, we're not at the place where we want in those very early grades in terms of hitting benchmarks. But I think when you look down the column and looking at the increased number of students at each grade level who are at benchmark, I think it's a testament to what our teachers are doing and how they're helping students progress year, year over year. So the next slide is looking at, I set it up so that you could look at or track the cohort of students. So on the left, you look at last year's second grade. And if you go straight across, you then look at that cohort now in the fall of third grade. So this third grade cohort of students in the fall of last year were at, had 38% of the students at benchmark. This year, to start the year, there's 49% of the students are at benchmark. One of the things you also notice is in many cases, you see a bit of a, what I would call a summer slide or a summer melt. So where they were in the spring versus where they came into the fall, you see a little bit of a slide or a melt on their reading performance. That's part of the reason we had, for the calendar change, was to move summer school from a two-week summer school back to a four-week summer school. We tried it at two weeks. The feedback from admin and from teachers was that it really needed to be four weeks. So that was part of the tonight's calendar adjustment in the consent agenda. Okay, looking at grades 6 through 8, again, looking at just the grade level from year to year. So last year's 6th grade, this year's 6th grade, last year's 7th grade, this year's 7th grade, et cetera, et cetera. And then looking at, tracking it by cohort, again, in reading. Last, you know, so 5th grade last year, starting at the last year's fall, this year's fall, but looking at kind of the same cohorts of students. It gets really touchy, this remote. Sorry, I'll back out. I don't know if you all are ready to move on, but. Okay, so looking at math. So again, we do reading and math, grades 2 through 8. So fall reading, excuse me, fall math. Again, just looking at second grade, year to year in second grade, how we're doing year to year. Again, I think you see growth in the numbers of students at benchmark year after year. And then tracking cohorts. So looking at, so second grade, fall of last year, again, at 32, going into fall of third grade is starting at 43. I'm not, I didn't do it that time. That's, no, go back to, yeah, all right, right there is good. All right, so, yeah, so the STAR math at the middle school, looking at the 6th grade, comparing 6th grade to 6th grade. Again, different groups of kids, but grade level, grade level content. And then comparing, looking at the cohort of students year over year. And then one more, Caleb. All right, so some general observations from the data at this point. So we, we see the summer, like a summer slide or a summer melt from spring to fall, and performance dipping from spring to fall. Looking at kind of cohort fall to fall, a lot of, most cohorts saw some improvement fall to fall where we're starting out. But then I would jump to number three and say, overall, we're remaining not at the starting points where we need to be. And I would argue, we're not yet at the final places where we need to be either. I think there's value in the STAR data, for sure. There are values and value in having the conversations about why in our student performance. There are ways to improve the student performance for the sake of STAR performance. And so I say that to say, I don't know that every student, especially in the older grade levels, take the STAR test seriously. It's not part of their grade. It's not part of much of anything. It's something they do for 25, 25 minutes on a given class period. So for them to find quality out of it isn't always the case. A lot of our students do have some intrinsic motivation and want to do well in everything that they do. And I'm not saying that students are intentionally bombing the STAR data. That's not what I'm saying. There's not enough good here to say we're doing a great job. There's enough bad to say we have, we do have significant challenges that we need to begin addressing. We also, as part of the calendar, I think Ms. Ward noted that our CIP benchmark window started this week. So one of the things we'll be able to do is look at our CIP benchmark scores, which are part of the students' grades, which are more content-based, and compare those to where our STAR data lines up. So I'm gonna put a little more weight on the data we're getting back from the CIP benchmarks than I will on the STAR. But I think when those, when that, if that data or where that data overlaps, then we know we've got some instructional or some intervention-type issues that we need to address. And again, principals are having those data conversations based on last year's SOL performance. I think the elementary school has started working on the vowels data that they have back. The vowels is much more diagnostic, it's much more in-depth of an assessment. So their teachers are working through that data. But the STAR gives us kind of a norm reference sort of across the country, sort of where we're doing and how we're performing. And it's, it's still concerning. I mean, we've, we still have work to do, for sure. So, questions on, on the data?
When will you be getting the CIP data in?
So the window opened yesterday. There's, I don't know the exact dates when each content area is being tested, but it's a two-week window. So we'll, we should have that, you know, by, by the end. So the end of the quarter is Halloween, so I'll have that data pretty quickly.
So November meeting?
Yeah, we should have some data for the November meeting, yes. We should have vowels data. Hopefully, we'll also have the state accountability data that has, I was anticipating talking about tonight. That has been delayed with no timeline being given at this point as to when they expect to release that. They're still promising superintendents having a week in advance prior to the public announcing of things. So there's still updating pieces. We go in and look at the updates, and it changes a little bit every time there's an update. So it's, it's a little bit maddening. Any other STAR questions?
I would just, I'd just like to say, I know that these numbers do not, they're not where we want them to be. They do not look good. They do not, this does not feel good.
No.
But I know that there's a lot of concerted effort on data-driven analysis and really looking at stuff and really improving the teacher methods. And we want to, I will speak for the board, what can we do to help support the teachers in this effort, whether it's additional training or whatever they need to, so that they can better help the students?
And having the right resources. So year one of, really, the year one of MTSS was last year, and that was really establishing our assessment platforms. So this year, what we've been working on is having, you've got the data now, what are we doing with it? So these are conversations about instructional practices, also interventions. Do we have the right interventions in place? Do we have the right people leading those interventions? Do we have the right bell schedules to make sure those interventions work effectively? It also allows us to have questions about, okay, how do we get more students to stay after school? Do we need to, you know, do I need to, do we need to revisit the notion of an activity bus or an after-school bus? Do we need to revisit some other kind of instructional minutes where we've got intervention built in into the middle of the day? For everybody, the middle school put that in this year for Power, you know, they're calling it Power Up. So are there, it'll lead to conversations and questions being asked, how do we need to structure things differently? Is it resources in some cases? Is it staffing? Do I need additional person here, additional person there? So it'll, it'll lead to a lot of other questions. Mr. Dobson?
What I'm looking here versus in the past is about the same. You got X amount passing, X amount floating there. Then you got the same amount that are not passing in or staying borderline. So looking at the numbers, this group of numbers versus the last way we did it, it looks about the same to me.
Okay.
Now, I may be wrong, but that's how I'm looking at it.
Sure. When I, when I looked at it when the numbers were coming in and when I was preparing this, depending on the grade level, so in our younger grades, we were seeing students sort of that in need of intervention, that third sort of band. We were able to move many of those students up a level or two. It's where we're, I think, still struggling is students who have a difficult time reading or in that sort of intensive intervention need, that band of students. Those are students who are either, have an IEP, need very specifically-designed instruction, or they need a lot more time with the curriculum, with the instruction in a very small group setting in addition to their tier one. So that would be a tier one, that they're getting their regular classroom instruction, but then they're working in a small group setting on a very specific program to get them up to grade level expectations. And that's where we're trying to figure out, do we have the right intervention programs in place? So our reading specialists have been very helpful. So our new secondary reading specialist has been working at the middle school level and with some high school students assessing our reading intervention program. And it's, there are not a lot of math intervention programs out there. We have ZERN, but there's just not a, there's not a robust research on math intervention like there is in reading intervention. So there are just not as many math intervention programs.
I see, in the old, what we had was, one-third was failing. Just about when you look at this, except for a few, it's one-third. Math, the way I look at math, the only way you become more efficient at it is that you go over more mathematic questions. Okay? So I, you use the word intervention. I just use the word keep going over and over and over until you improve. And, but, as I see it, it's a little bit better in some, but not what I would call a greater area.
Right. It's not like, ah, our work is done.
Yeah.
We're far from that. But honestly, if it were easy, everybody would do it. Like, if, like, they're, you know, they're, the reason why teaching is an art and it's a science and making sure that we've got great teachers in our classrooms in front of our kids. So, I mean, that's, that's a number-one piece. And then making sure they, we're equipping them with the tools and the time and the schedules in order to do that. I think one of the other pieces we're gonna have to have conversations about is how do we affect learning outside the classroom? How do we engage in sort of a community-wide literacy campaign and working, trying to get more reading to occur over the summer, on the weekends, after-school hours? How do we boost that? How do we continue to boost mathematical learning outside of the, outside of the bells? And how do we continue to engage, engage the community in that pursuit?
And you may have said this, and I missed it, so I apologize. So when you get the results, does it drill down to tell you what areas are their strength and what areas are their weaknesses? So then the teacher knows what to focus in on?
You can pull certain reports from the individual students. I think you can pull classroom reports to look at, here are the strands that need intervention or that need remediation. Here are some commonly missed areas for teachers to go back and work on. In terms of the reading piece, I'm gonna lean towards the HQIM and the VLA, it's kind of textbook materials, to make sure teachers are kind of staying aligned with the Virginia Literacy Act for intervention. So there are support materials that the state has approved for high-quality instruction. So there's some, I would say it's kind of tier 1B that a teacher would use in a small group setting, and then we have interventions for reading on top of that. So STAR will give you some of that. I'm gonna lean, especially in the reading area, to the analysis and the feedback we're getting from the reading program. So STAR reading doesn't always align completely and tightly with our reading textbook series and VLA. So it's, it's a snapshot. It gives us kind of a picture. But like a lot of selfies, sometimes the first picture doesn't turn out exactly the way you want it to, and so you continue to take more and more selfies until you get the one you want. We're not taking multiple pictures to get the results we want or the results that we want, you know, everybody to see. It's, we're doing the snapshot. This is what we've got. Let's triangulate some data by looking at, okay, we've got this student performed here, but they're, you know, they're up on this assessment, they're up on this other assessment. The STAR may be the outlier in that case. But if I've got three out of three, they're both kind of in the, in need zone, then that's obviously gonna activate some student success teams and some conversations.
I just wanted to quickly clarify, the timing for summer school, is it half-day for a month or the full days for a month?
It's half-days for a month. It's half-days.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Warren?
I do have a comment. And at risk of sounding like a broken record, because I know why I will, it seems to me that, especially with reading, years ago, it didn't seem to be such a big struggle for children in elementary school to learn how to read. And in recent years, it seems that, for some reason, it has become a struggle. And I have to think back to many, many years ago when I was in school. School day was from 9 until 3. Somewhere along the way, we've added an hour. Now we're 8 to 3, well, essentially 3 o'clock, 2:50, I think, technically. So we've added somewhere 50 minutes plus to the school day, and we still can't seem to get the results that we want. Last year, I believe, the '24, '25 school year, I believe, is when the state rolled out some new reading curriculum, new reading guidelines, and it, they simply called it the science of reading. Great. To me, that was just phonics repackaged and relabeled. Because we went a number of years and didn't teach phonics. I can recall some younger student, younger kids in my family that weren't being taught phonics. And I cannot believe that it's the teachers. I know a lot of our teachers. I don't know all of them, of course, but I know a lot of them, and I know we have some darn good teachers. Now we're awaiting new guidelines, new curriculum direction, whatever, for math. And it just makes me feel like we're trying to reinvent the wheel. We used to know how to do this. All of a sudden, we don't know how to do this. And rather than looking back at what used to work and be very effective, we're trying to come up with a brand-new idea, a brand- to come up with a brand-new idea, a brand-new solution. And I guess it's just because, you know, I'm an old-timer, that I, I find this very, very frustrating, but it used to work and I just can't understand why we can't make it work again.
I think that conversation would take longer than we have tonight.
It would take extremely way too long, yes.
Education and schools in general are the, the bottleneck for a lot of society. So what, I, I do in general think the expectation for reading and math performance has increased per grade level over a generation. I think what is expected for students to be able to do on these assessments is different than what it was a generation ago. But I also think that a lot of people have gotten their hands in and to muddy, muddy the waters on what is effective instruction and what may not be effective. And I don't want this in the curriculum and I don't want that in the curriculum and moving things around. So it's, it's not a simple, simple answer. Again, we could spend, we could take our entire workday next week, kind of walking, walking from why Johnny can't read to where we are, where we are today.
I, I sympathize with what he said. Because I believed in it all along. In nineteen sixty-six, we were number one in the world in education. Today, we're number twenty-seventh. Two and two equals four is still four, except we're teaching it different. But it's still four.
Right.
What happened?
On the assessments, they're not asking you just to fill in the blank two plus two. Like it's the, I'll, I think what I'll try to do is at the work session, pull some sample questions from some of the SOL tests to like, it's, it's not as, as straightforward as that. But again, that's part of it, that's not all of it. I'm not saying the tests are more complicated and more convoluted. Like it's also, there's, I mean, there's probably a half dozen variables that we can talk about in terms of importance of education and respect for school and its attendance and its, you know, involvement in homework and it's, there's, there's a number of factors that, that all, all play a role in it.
I remember as a child, I would come home from school. I had approximately an hour's worth of homework. So I would sit down and do an hour's worth of homework and then look at tomorrow, we had like maybe fifty pages, okay? And I'd look at those fifty pages. Then my mother would come in and we'd go over my homework and then she would spot quiz me on those fifty pages, because she had read them too. That's not being done today. And that's a big part of the problem today, I think.
It's part of the challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Mrs. Hodges?
I'm wondering when you think the principals might have an idea of, of what, what needs to be done differently in maybe in the teaching, all the things you addressed? You think that'll be in?
We'll begin having those-
By the next board meeting? What I don't wanna do is just wait and sit here until the next set of scores come up and then we're having the same conversation. Hopefully not, but-
Sure.
Could you provide for us maybe the next meeting? Give us an update-
Sure.
-on kind of what's being done, you know, even if it's not even, just the ideas that you're floating around of how you're moving forward on this?
So we're meeting with principals on their comprehensive school plans. And so part of the, that will be a data-driven process to talk about, okay, how do we improve this year over last year? Again, like a lot of things at the state, we're waiting for new state templates to come in, so in the meantime, we're using old state templates. So we, old state templates aren't gonna cover everything in the accountability framework and so new ones will need to cover what's in the accountability stuff. But the heart of the matter is we still need to focus on reading, math, science-
Right.
-and how are our students performing on those and what are we doing to improve scores to go back to the strategic plan where we, we're trying to get to ninety percent for everybody across the board, every population. We're looking at ninety percent. Are we, and the question comes up, are we at ninety percent? If not, then what are we doing to get there?
Correct.
So that's part of the, the school comprehensive, school improvement plans that we're meeting with principals. Actually, I think we meet with principals after, the week after, I think, starting like November fifth and six, it's that week. So we'll have CIP data to then look at and assess pacing guides, content attainment, and then principals working with content teachers or grade levels, then developing action plans. And it may be review sessions or changing pacing or some instructional practices and the like. So we'll begin having those, those conversations with principals for second week in November. So we'll have some, I can come back to the board in November with some action steps. Here's, here's what the CIP benchmark data looks like and this is what, what we're doing to address it.
Good.
I mean, maybe it's, you know, it may be, I anticipate it being better than the STAR data, but we'll see. It's our first time working with CIP benchmarks and CIP pacing and assessing during Mastery Connect, but it should give us an early indicator of, of where we stand for SOL testing.
Ms. Diggs?
One question, Dr. Daniels.
Yes, ma'am.
On the, the principals, do they have, I wonder what input they're having from parents on helping their kids with homework? Not only math and reading, but the whole shebang. Is, is that a viable question that they could answer at some point?
We can bring that up and ask them. Like if I, I don't think that's a common discussion point that we have in terms of how do we help parents, help kids at home? But that may be a conversation that we need to begin having as we talk about learning outside of the school walls and outside of the regular bell schedule or calendar. You know, I, just anecdotally, you hear like, oh, I stopped being able to help my kid in math at such and such grade. When they got into this stuff, I was out. But that's anecdotally, I don't know that that's, you know, necessarily true.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question about CIP. Would it be possible to bring in data for the CIP cohort to show where we are? Is that, would that be possible?
I think so. I think we get those reports, so they-
Okay. That'd be interesting.
Yeah, they generate a lot of data for us, so-
Okay.
-and it's usually a pretty quick turnaround. So I should have some tentative results probably by the end of the week-
Okay.
-to see. I, I went into Mastery Connect today to kind of see if I could find some stuff, but I don't, I think it's still ongoing.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
It's, we're at item six, school safety discussion.
I mean, I think this is intended to be, I guess, an open discussion among board members based on some of the, I guess, discussion recently within the community. And so I'll, I'll start with having, providing some updates. I don't know, I guess I'll start with. We should have favorable information regarding the SRO grants. I'm, we are not the, the grant appliers, we're not the grant holders. It's not our place to say one thing or another thing about the grant, but I anticipate some, some positive communication about the SRO grants in the, in the near future. Also, we've, I think we've talked a little bit about it among the board, but I don't know how public the information is. So Matthews, the state offers annual security equipment grant. So Matthews was awarded eighty thousand dollars for the high school and Thomas Hunter for weapons detection and fencing. So we are coordinating with a weapons detection vendor to do some demonstrations. The board, it was a topic for the board during one of our summer work sessions, so you all asked me to begin pursuing that and getting more information about weapons detection. So we have, we have about eighty thousand dollars to be able to provide weapons detection systems at the high school and here at the middle school. We did not receive any grant money for weapons detection at the elementary school. But, so we're, again, we're looking at what equipment to buy, but a, a key piece about having the equipment is also developing the protocols around that. So how are we gonna staff that equipment to supervise students as they are moving through? It's looking at how are we adjusting traffic flow coming in and out of the buildings? When are we deploying the weapons detection? Are we doing it every time the, the public is coming in? The good news is there are several school divisions around us who are a year or so ahead of us in implementing weapons detection in their schools. So we can look at some of their protocols and some of their messaging. At this point, the, the school divisions that I've talked to about, hey, which, which brand did you go with? Are you satisfied with that, that system? What are some of the protocols you put in place? How do you staff it? My initial concern was if we're deploying weapons detections and we are looking for weapons, what happens when we find it? And who's there when we, or if we, should we find it? How, you know, what are we, who, who's there? And then that goes back to school resource officers and staffing of the school resource officers and how do we work with the, the county to make sure that we can get the, get those individuals in place? So we're, we'll begin having, we've had some tentative conversations with principals on thinking through the staffing, the who, who's available? How do we move traffic off the bus in the morning? Student-parent drop-off in the morning? How many entrances? Like you have to really funnel everybody through one or two places in your building in the morning that then can create sort of a backup or a delay of, you need to make sure your Chromebook is out. If you've, if you've got a cell phone that's out of sight, but it's in your backpack, per pop, you need to get that out, because it'll set off the, the weapons detection, so that in and out and just working, working through some of those things. But it's, it's coming. So I know Mr. Anthony was kind of our point person, he's reached out. We're attempting to have a demo, hopefully during kind of that election, that November third, fourth sort of window. As I've talked with other superintendents and other divisions, they've invited, if we wanna bring a team, to go look at their morning routine and take a look at their systems to see, see how they work. That, that invitation has, has been extended to us. Last year, so on another item, last year, we had security grant money for what are called environmental sensors, otherwise known as vape detectors. The modern generation of vape detectors also can pick up keywords, can pick up noise level fluctuations in addition to being able to discern regular vape from THC vape, et cetera. So we had the, the wiring installed for the four bathrooms at the high school. We delayed the full implementation of those detectors at the high school pending some bathroom renovations. At the time, we were anticipating, hoping to get some bathroom renovations to occur. At the high school, we ran out of summer because of everything that the county maintenance crew was, was able to get done in other places. We just kinda ran out of, ran out of summer. So we're working to find a solution to, in a nutshell, we've gotta get the ceiling closed in. There are a lot of broken and open ceiling tiles in the bathrooms at the high school. So we've gotta get those closed in to then calibrate the environmental sensors, get administrators trained on what the software for these environmental sensors and what they can report on. They'll sync with our camera system. We can figure out like different ways they can alert school staff from blinking lights to emails to text messages to, to whatever, to alert, alert staff that, that something is happening. It's a pretty cool technology, like it can kind of map out the space. They're not cameras, but it can map out the space and determine clusters of, of kids in one area of the space and noise volume going up. So if you hear, you know, you know, a ruckus is brewing in the bathroom, it'll send an alert or key words like you wanna fight and it hears the word fight and so it can send like an alert to administration to make them aware. So, so those, some of these things have been delayed a little bit, but they're, they're on the cusp, so.
Okay. So when we talk about weapon, weapons detection, we're including knives in that as well? Or we just, is it focusing primarily on guns, handguns?
It's weapons. I'll be honest, I don't know the technology well enough right now to tell you it's, it looks at the density of the metal in the sensor, but it's, it's a generation above walking through a standard metal detector.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't know it well enough. I need to sit through the-
Okay.
-the, the session with the vendor. When I last looked at them, this, this generation of, of device was new and not totally tested at that point and most of my time was spent looking at just straight metal detectors. These, these were the, the cutting edge, the, you know, these were just at the technology expos and hadn't really kind of deployed.
So we're also talking about using them for the sporting activities after our, after school hours?
And I think that's part of the conversation. So are we, are we gonna have them at school board meetings when folks are coming in?
Right.
At open house, at the band concert, at the basketball game, at the, the parent night, the, the whatever? So if we, I think, you know, and I think that's a board conversation, a principal conversation is if we are deploying these, then we need to deploy them. Like if it's, like if, when we've got people in the building and it says, one of the principals, one of the, excuse me, one of the superintendents I talked to said, they deploy them for any school-sponsored activity. So it wouldn't necessarily be, if the high school is hosting donks, we wouldn't necessarily deploy the weapons detection for, for donks. And they're portable, so you can move them from place to place based on an event. So in theory, we can, and they're battery packed, so we can take them out to the football field and have folks walk through them prior to coming in for a football game or soccer game or, or whatever. Or take them down to the auditorium for graduation for, you know, a school, a school event in the auditorium.
So, so it, it is, has to be, there has to be a, a person that uses it?
You kinda need two people.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a machine that's, that he needs to-
It's a machine and it's gonna indicate there's someone tested positive for something. It may be a heavy-duty three-ring binder. It may be a cell phone. It may be the Chromebook that didn't get taken out. It may be some of the superintendents, you know, I guess if you have kind of a heavy eyeglasses case, like a metal, like it, that can set it off sometimes and you can adjust sensitivity for, for different, different amounts.
There's a sensitivity.
So, so then the, in my mind, then the domino effect is going to be, you're gonna have to have staff.
You're gonna have to have staff.
So and, and also with the bathroom sensors, someone's gonna have to be available to respond to those, so that's gonna be-
Right.
...availability of staff at any given moment to respond.
Correct. And that's part of the challenge, like-
Yes.
And, you know, if it's, if you set up the environmental sensor to receive an email, then like I don't, I don't want admin or staff sitting at, at a computer waiting for an email to come in. an email to come in. So if you don't check your email for three hours later, and you can go, depending on what the information is, you can go back and look, okay, there's only one student in here, the, the vape sensor tested positive for whatever. I go back and check the camera, there's only one student, one time, and that's kind of an easy go-back to figure it out. When you have six students or five students in the restroom at a time, the vape sensor goes off, it's much more challenging to then figure out who, who it was. You're still going to have to go through and attempt to search or figure out who, who it was. I mean, it's not, it's not a foolproof, it's not a foolproof situation because you're still going to have multiple people in that space should the sensor go off. But you can begin to track, hey, every time David is in the restroom, the vape sensor tends to go off, whether it's, you know, him and two of his buddies, or him by himself, or him in a crowd of six. Like it, you can begin to try to narrow down your focus.
And I think, and Ellen, and this is my final question concern, you know, we want safety. We, we talk about that. We focus on that. We, there's a lot of discussion about that. But, but I think we need to be prepared that when these are in place, we're going to get a lot of feedback back from the community about why do we need this? Why, is it overkill? I mean, I just think that as a board, there's going to be a negative, you're going to have some that support that, but you're going to have a lot of people, I believe, in this community that are going to say, we don't need that. We didn't have that when we were in school, et cetera, et cetera. So I think as a board, we need to be prepared for that negative feedback.
I hope that's not the case. I mean, based on initial results from climate survey from staff, I mean, that has come up at the high school. Several people have brought up the need for, to make sure we're, we're getting the SROs back as quickly as possible, the need for weapons detection. And just gleaning the, the few social media comments and things, I mean, I, again, I don't.
I hope.
Put all my, I don't put all my faith in social media, but the, the bit, the, that I take from that is I think there's, there's, there's a willingness, there's a desire to make sure we have more things in place for our kids. I'm hoping that it can't happen here, sort of thought process is, is eroding, but.
Right.
All right. If you go back a couple of years ago, when we had name change at the school was a topic at the school board meeting, we had sheriff deputies on duty at the doors, coming in. You could not have any bag to carry in. Women couldn't bring a handbag or a crochet bag or anything like that. That was not allowed, but it was the sheriff's department. So your HRO officer is going to have to be in charge of this, no matter how you deploy it. They have to be in charge of it. Okay? That's, that's a given. Now to go back, talking about weapons as an example, when I went to school, every boy had a penknife. You're not going to allow that today.
Yeah.
Okay? So you have a different set of circumstances there for a good reason. I never heard of anybody getting stabbed with a penknife when I was a kid, but in recent day history, yeah, you have. So you, you have to have this all geared to where that SRO officer is in charge of it. You can't get around it. And you may have to go from two places down to one of coming into the building.
Well, I think that's, that's where we have to talk through with admin. It works better at Thomas Hunter. I mean, we, I think it's easier to flow here. The high school is going to be a little more challenging where the bus loop, the buses drop off students versus car riders is on the opposite side of, of the building. You can't have car riders going through the bus loop and weaving in between school buses and trying to kind of navigate that. I think in terms of funding from the grant, I think, I'll get the final numbers. I don't, I don't have a, a solid quote back for the demo, but I, we'll be close to being able to purchase two systems for the high school and one for Thomas Hunter. So, but again, it'll, it'll go back to that staffing piece. And that, the exact question about the SRO, I asked some of the other superintendents, how are you staffing this? Is your SRO where the weapons detection is? Because my assumption was we needed an SRO, you know, if you're looking for weapons and you find one, you know, you, you need somebody with a weapon there to do something about it. But they, the ones I talked to said they just have staff who are manning and helping facilitate the students moving through. And then the SRO is still moving about. They may, and one of the essential pieces, one of the common denominators with SRO is you don't want predictable patterns. So they're intentionally not in the same place every day at the same time. So, and it, so I, I think we have to think through who and what and how and, you know, just, I guess, you know, be thoughtful about it. It's not as easy as just kind of plugging them in and saying go and then we, we figure it out. I mean, we need to do some pre-planning and coordination with the sheriff's office on like, like what is, what does this look like?
Right. I mean, an SRO can't be there during the school day and at night also. I mean.
Correct, correct. Well, again, thinking about, okay, so, you know, I, one of the questions I asked about was like after-school activities. So what are you doing about like after-school practices and kids coming in and out from practice? Are you having somebody manning that? How do you, you know, how do you manage, manage that piece? So, again, lots of, lots of questions to be asked.
Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I just have a quick story to share. It'll be quick. Some years ago, I worked part-time in security over at the hospital in Gloucester, and none of these security officers were armed. After begging and pleading, we finally did convince them to put two officers on a shift, but still no one was armed. We had a situation one weekend that was very frightening to a lot of us. And at a meeting following that with the facilities director, I asked a question, do you think that we will ever be armed? And the director said, yes, I believe you will. And I asked the question, when? He said, after someone gets killed.
Yeah.
So please, as a board, let's don't wait for a tragedy to happen, to take the necessary, necessary precautions to try to prevent it the best as we possibly can.
Thank you for those words, Mr. Morgan.
That's a fact.
If there are no further questions for Dr. Daniel, our comments will move on. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Very informative again. Item seven, citizens' questions, comments, or requests. Comments not pertaining to personnel or student matters. Protocol for public comment period. Matthews County residents and school employees wishing to speak should sign up with their name and address on the sheet provided. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. Comment period will end after ninety minutes. All comments should be directed to the school board. Speakers shall not address matters involving students or personnel as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments when deciding on matters brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input. Our first speakers tonight are Mr. Ken Childress and Mr. Brian Donnelly.
Ken Childress, Hudson, Virginia, Matthews Robotics Club coach. I just want to give an update on a high school robotics program. The high school has a club that meets once a month, one hour. We participated in that and we had, that was on September twenty-sixth, we had twenty-four sign up and seventeen attended. And Brian and I have a Matthews, Matthews Robotics Club. We meet once a week, one to two hours. Our first meeting was on October twenty-second. We had seven students and four mentors, parents, and some people that wanted to help. We meet at three o'clock on Wednesdays. And this, I thought this was a good start, and this program costs nothing for the school. I want to thank the school board and the high school administration for giving us this opportunity to bring back robotics to the high school.
We thank you. Thank you so much.
Brian Donnelly, Matthews, Virginia. Just to amplify a little bit of what, what Ken was talking about, in our two club meetings so far, we've established our safety program, talked about a, a skills-building program and the, and the, the club conduct in general. We'll be getting more into that. But then in tomorrow's schedule, we're doing hands-on activities, soldering, learning activities, usage of a multimeter, and then we have a competition robot that will be analyzing a hands-on, a little guided discovery where the, the participants will have a robot right there in their, in their hands, and we're going to figure it out, see how it works. So a little hands-on thing. In January, there's a regional competition open Richmond for robotics. We won't be participating, but we, we are hoping to attend as spectators, and we'd like to invite you to come with us. It's a great, it's a great learning thing. If you haven't seen one, there's nothing like it, and, and it'll really give you a sense of what we're doing in our program. I, I don't have a date, but I will surely get it back to you.
Ms. Diggs.
Yep.
That was your question too. It was all our question. This is great. This is fantastic. Thank you so much for your efforts and your, again, energy for this program, and it sounds like it's paying off. The students are really excited.
It's coming along. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you. Ms. Amy Bohannon Stewart?
I'm super excited to hear what Ms. Bray had to say about the Matthews High School students helping the, helping Matthews Elementary School. So anyway, that sounds like a win-win situation. I do come here tonight with some major concerns that I feel compelled to draw your attention to. I am a taxpayer and former Thomas Hunter Middle School teacher, as well as a parent of a recent Matthews High School graduate. I'd like to think that most of the problems in our society, government, and in places like our schools are due to a lack of understanding. And I'm convinced of this because, well, perhaps, you know, I just want to think the best to people whenever possible. I'd really like to think administrators just don't understand why we're hemorrhaging staff here in Matthews. Hopefully, it's not deliberate because there, there's a limited number of people that are willing to work here. I understand why Matthews is hemorrhaging staff as I was one of the staff members that bled out. The best way for administrators to understand why we're hemorrhaging staff would be to help, would be to step into the shoes of your teachers and support staff sometimes. It does seem like we aren't doing enough to stop the hemorrhaging of staff. There is something that our administrators should be doing right now to fix it that's absolutely free. Just as teachers should ask themselves if they would want to be a student in their class, administrators should ask themselves if they would want to be a teacher or member of support staff in their school. Matthews loses staff mainly because they don't feel supported or they feel like they're set up for failure. One of the best ways to make teachers and make staff feel supported and like you're at least trying to understand what they go through is for all administrators to sub at least once a month for at least one entire class block. This helps administrators understand if their policies and schedules work well. It will help administrators make better decisions in the future. And I'm saving my biggest concern for last, and that's for student and staff safety. And I feel like this should be at the top of everyone's list because student achievement is hindered when students don't feel safe. I'm disappointed that spending on positions in the school board office has been greatly expanded before we have SROs in place or even have deputies at games like we used to. When my daughter was playing volleyball two years ago here at Matthews High School, we had deputies at our home games. I attended two Matthews High School volleyball games this fall, and I did not see any deputies at either game. The other thing that leads me to be even more concerned about safety for staff and students is that our sheriff felt the need to remind parents to let her office know if any crimes happen to their children, whether they are inside or outside of school. It sounds like it's possible that schools may not be reporting everything that they should to local law enforcement. When I was working in this school system, I felt like we used to have a much better relationship with our local sheriff and deputies. We regularly saw Deputy Berry around at faculty meetings, and I felt like my principal, Mrs. Byrd, had a great relationship with her. It can be that way again, and it must be that way again. In addition to keeping students and staff safe, it will build trust with the community if someone independent of school administration is in this building keeping a watch on things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bohannon Stewart. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
Sharon Fry, Sharon Fry, Port Haywood, Virginia. When I left home tonight, I got an email and Mr. Morgan, you said, things have changed and what has changed? And my email said it all. It, it was written to me and it says, dear God, we took God out of our schools a long time ago. That's sad. We thank you for your guidance for us all here tonight as we seek to make good decisions for this school and this community. Please keep our schools and our community safe from harm. Please give us rest from any worry and peace to trust in the outcomes from what we have voted on. And after this meeting, guide us safely home and let us awaken to your love in the morning in the name of Jesus Christ. Unfortunately, we humans, we sheep, we U.S. citizens or whatever, long about nineteen sixty-two or nineteen sixty-three, we chose, or the government chose for us, to take God out of schools. We have to bring God back into our schools and give our children a God-given life, a life of faith and trust, some over government and over authority and administrators. Not that there shouldn't be regulations. As far as the STAR test data, I'm watching and I'm watching and I'm watching. I haven't seen any change. And so I was, I listened and I heard, these kids aren't motivated when they take this STAR test. Well, why take it? If they're not motivated and you're not going to get a good outcome, why take it? What, it's not going to display the results we want. The results are poor, so give them some motivation. Give them a prize. Give them a star. Hey, the top kid on the star gets something. They'll get, make them strive for achievement on the star. Or why even take it? We're wasting our time. And then I heard SOLs. Well, maybe they can't take the STAR test because the SOLs are worded differently. And I don't know, I saw eyes roll up there, Mr. Dr. Daniel. But the thing is, I thought you said, I thought you said that you're going to have a meeting with the board to see, to see how the SOLs are written. I might have misunderstood you.
Okay, okay.
But I would like to know. I would like to know if they're sabotaging our children because in all aspects, two and two is four. And how can the SOLs make it any different? And I also agree with Kelvin, Morgan. Homework. That was a good question. Are our children doing homework? I always had homework. I didn't have parents there to tell me if it was right or wrong, but in the morning, when I turned it in, I got extra credit. Oh, you did your homework. You give, I'll give you a point here, I'll give you a point there. Homework is essential. I appreciate your job. God blessed me, I didn't get it. God blessed me, I didn't get it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bray. Is there anyone else who'd like to approach the podium?
Randy Applegate, teacher at Matthews High School. Just want to reiterate and thank Brian and Ken for working with the robotics. There is an appetite for robotics, six through 12, probably even younger than that, and they've been engaging with the 4H program and other things. But at the high school, it is a critical pathway, and it can, it can lead to a lot of great things moving from high school. And the stuff that they're teaching, I was able to attend their meeting. I'm doing kind of both the audiovisual and the robotics, kind of overseeing both of them, so it was a little tough for me to get to the whole thing, but there is an appetite there, and I want to thank them for, for being there. And I appreciate your support. We've got some stuff to work out with space and whatnot, but all that's in the process. And I just wanted to thank everybody and all the volunteers.
Thank you, Mr. Applegate. Thank you for your support and all you're doing as well. Is there anyone else who'd like to approach?
My name is Julie Clark, and I live here in Matthews. I've studied research, school shootings since before Columbine. My research was in the book, Raising a Nonviolent Child, by author psychologist John Roseman. Many parents here in Matthews, Ms. Hodges, she knows of my research, and parents are coming to me constantly. They're writing to the board that their children, their grandchildren are being threatened with bladed knives. It's being written off as horseplay. That's not horseplay. About the same time, I heard this story from a grandparent. There was a story in Tennessee where a boy brought a bladed knife to school, a box cutter, and threatened others with it. Nothing was done to this child. He came back with a gun. He shot another student and then killed himself at school. It's just not being taken seriously enough from the things I'm hearing daily from parents and grandparents in this county. And they all tell me that they're writing to the board, they're calling, and nothing's being done. With your permission, I would like to hand a copy of this book. Copyright 2024, it's written by Tom Sissons.
Thank you.
Staying One Step Ahead. The book is titled Staying One Step Ahead: How to Prevent School Shootings. Tom has been to over 66 school shootings and counting, Uvalde. He's studied them extensively. One thing he writes about in his book is, he talks mostly about intruder shooters, but the median age of school shooters is 16. Most school shooters, 80% if not more, are students. The youngest school shooters in U.S. were six years old. One shot his teacher in Newport News. Flint, Michigan, a little boy brought, six-year-old boy brought a gun to school, and he shot a classmate who wouldn't kiss him. The youngest mass sniper school shooters in America were 11 and 13 years old in Jonesboro, Arkansas. They had carried 11 guns to school. They set up outside in the woods behind their school and picked off students and staff as they came outside, when one of them went inside to pull the fire alarm. The woods brings me to this story, told to me by a cafeteria worker here in Matthews County, that school metal detectors may have their place, but they're terrified with the back of the school being left open. Service doors, cafeteria doors, and they know that the students know these doors are open. Also, with metal detectors becoming more in use, school bus stops are being targeted. Bladed weapons and knives are being hidden on playgrounds, under bolt, under buildings, under mulch, because they know how to bypass the detectors. A superintendent in a county not far from here posted in the newspaper when they got their metal detectors that the metal detectors would only be used when they had enough deputies on hand. This was posted in the newspaper. The county community should not know when they're going to be used. The students should not know when they're going to be used. If anybody wanted to do something, all they'd have to do is look for a deputy car. No deputy car, everything's fine. Deputy car, they know not to bring their weapons. So those are just a few things to be aware of. Yes?
Sorry. This is very, I'm, I'm very glad you approached the podium. Your, your three minutes is up, but I'm very appreciative of you coming forward and speaking with us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would, would anyone else like to come to the podium? No one else would like to approach? Thank you very much. For all of those of you who did speak up, thank you. We will move on to item eight, superintendent's informational reports from Dr. Daniel with 8.1, the absentee report.
I'd like to make a comment.
Followed by information for school board. That will be after, at the end. Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
All right, members of the board, attendance data, so this data that's in the packet and is up on the screen covers the first part of August and then into September, so it doesn't, it hasn't captured our October data. So one of the things that Ms. Thomas has added for this report is then the, the tardies for the year. And then, as always, we've looked, she's looking at students with five parent excused absences, so the number of students who have exceeded in the first, really at this, like, when this data is collected, about halfway through the first quarter, or an eighth of the way through the year. Again, as a reminder, students get five parent notes per semester, so that then gets reset for second semester, but the chronic absenteeism then is over 17 days over the course of the year. So you've got some comparison number this year versus last year. Attendance warning letters. I believe we begin sending warning letters at three absences? Is it four absences, when a student reaches four absences in the semester? So that's when we begin that process. So like, so if you look at Matthews High School, for example, while we're zero this year compared to two last year who have exceeded the absences, you still have a number of students who have received those warning letters that are being sent home. That's, that's a lot higher. But yeah, we're, we're lower in than in the number of attendance plans being developed. What honestly I found particularly interesting about this by adding the tardies for the day is looking at, we have more elementary students tardy to school per day than we do high school students. I think that the general thought process would be, our high school students, as they're driving themselves and whatnot, they're kind of rolling in sleepy-eyed teenagers. But really, what we see more of is our elementary students who are late to school, and how much of that is, is developing patterns, developing habits early on in elementary school. So, so that's kind of an early tracking mechanism for where we are on tardies. I'll say our tracking last year of overall attendance, we were kind of in pretty good shape, pretty good shape, pretty good shape. And it's really, we continue to monitoring it and working with families, working with multidisciplinary teams, student success teams that Ms. Thomas is, and, and the principals have formed to assist students, working with the court system, which is, remains a challenge. But I think those efforts paid off. But what's really critical is that last month of school, and making that last month of school engaging, important, effective, to make sure that students aren't just sort of taking off the last two weeks and that, really throwing our chronic absentee numbers really out of whack. So I think the schools really did a great job last year honing in those, excuse me, those last several weeks of, of school, along with the, you know, obviously, it's, it's a year-long effort. You can't start worrying about attendance in April. So monitoring it and working with families, communicating it, I think schools kind of reached out like attendance awareness month, and being on time to school, some of those sort of outreach programs. But it's, it's going to be a constant, constant project.
Yes.
Any questions about absenteeism report from the board?
I just had a clarification question on the tardies. Number of students late per month, is that all individual discrete occurrences, or are these multiple, some students will have multiple tardies and?
So it's average, average students per day.
Average per?
Right, so that's average tardies.
So on the totals?
Oh, I say, okay, the next column over, sorry. I think it's incidents. I didn't ask her that specific question, but I think for the, for the month, there, I don't think there are 163 non-duplicated students. I think there are 163 incidences of tardies. Yeah, I would imagine, just having been a high school principal.
Students are tardy.
No, I haven't been a high school principal, so I'm guessing probably a third of those are repeats. They're probably, you probably have 35 to 40 kids who are making up the 163, but I'm just, I would have to look at the list to, to check that.
Do you want to see the data?
It didn't come up there.
Oh, it didn't? Can you hit the next screen for me, Caleb? In the packet, too. All right. Other information for the board, for your information, so there's the high school financial report, the Thomas Hunter financial report, field trip requests for Thomas Hunter, again, elementary financial report, field trips for the three schools, and the FY '26 September expenditure report. I will say, as we, I was reviewing this expenditure report, there are some, I think, Excel formula errors that then got pulled in. So Ms. Hunley and I are going to, Ms. Hunley's going to work on kind of fixing those. We will update the correct, corrected version of the financial report in Board Docs and send a note to the board members to let you know when it's, the corrected version is, is there. So I apologize for some of those formula errors in Excel. Just so the board knows, we, what happens is we extract this report out of RDA, then format it into Excel, and so it's, it's multiple, multiple steps in formatting and things along those lines. So, and again, this is kind of a new formatting process for us, so we're, we'll, we'll get these corrected and posted for everyone's review.
Well, I would like to say that I really appreciate this new format. It's easier to read, it's expanded down to the line item level, more of a line item level than we have been used to. That's very helpful, and I appreciate the effort that it's taken, and thank you so much.
I think that wraps, if there are no questions on any of the reports for 8.2, I think we'll move on to nine.
Great. School board informational reports. So first, we're going to start with 9.1, the VSBA Delegate Assembly Discussion. And the annual VSBA conference is coming up in November. Mr. Morgan will be our delegate this year, and you have some information to share with us, I believe.
I do have some information to share with you. Coming up at the annual conference for Virginia School Board Association, they are proposing some legislative changes that will have to be voted on by the delegates at the annual conference coming up. I will read these, I think each board member has a hard copy, but I will read these proposals for anyone out here who doesn't quite understand what we're doing. The first legislative proposal is an assessment reform and accountability reform. And it reads, "The VSBA supports the establishment of a balanced assessment and accountability system as defined by local school boards that utilizes a more complete picture of student learning by providing both measures of achievement such as SOL tests and state-approved authentic measures of individualized student growth over time. Furthermore, the VSBA supports a reduction in the number of SOL tests to carefully selected grade levels and content areas to permit the reallocation of assessment dollars and instructional time. Virginia School Boards Association also supports a comprehensive review of state content standards, curriculum guidelines, and assessments to ensure that policies promote culturally responsive educational practices free of systemic racism, discrimination, and background knowledge biases. The VSBA supports maintaining a system of accountability standards which weights growth measures at least as heavily as proficiency, mastery measures in assessing elementary and middle schools. Additionally, VSBA supports evaluating English learners appropriately, continuing to exempt them from the achievement and growth calculations for 11 semesters. If the Board of Education passes standards that do not do this, VSBA urges the General Assembly to pass legislation that would require those standards to be modified accordingly." Following paragraph would be the new language that is proposed to be added to this legislative reform. "Virginia's public schools are committed to delivering high-quality instruction and ensuring student success. Therefore, VSBA supports legislate, legislation to provide school divisions with a minimum of one full academic year to prepare for and implement any major policy changes that affect curriculum, instruction, assessment, or accountability systems." Do we want to have any discussion on that particular one proposal?
Our awareness up to date on this, as we will have another meeting, which to discuss more fully. But I do appreciate you going over the items and then the proposed changes, so that we can get a flavor for it, and so that the community can as well.
Okay. If there are no questions, discussion on that particular one, I'll move on to the next one. Which is proposal number six, Chronic Absenteeism, Absenteeism Proposed Legislative Position. And this is new, and the language is very plain and simple. It said, "Remove chronic absenteeism as an indicator in accountability and accreditation models used to rate public schools." That's a proposed new policy.
Mrs. Hodges has a question.
Is that a, I thought that was a federal. So, okay, just to make sure I'm, I'm not mixing apples and oranges here.
It is. So Virginia has to align their accountability measures with federal, and it's part of the federal guidelines, so I mean, I, that's obviously a level above my knowledge in terms of Virginia interacting with the U.S. Department of Education, which, you know, is undergoing some overhaul right now, anyway, so.
Thank you for that clarification, just want to make sure I remember that correctly.
That's the proposal. But, okay, anything further on that particular proposal? If not, I'll move on to the next one, proposal number eight. This is Enrollment Cap for Virtual Virginia. Proposed Amendment to Existing Legislative Position. It's going to be some language which is proposed to be deleted, and some that's going to be added. I'll try to clarify as I go. It begins, "Virginia's school divisions continue to face drastic budget cuts at both state and local levels and are faced with the possibility of eliminating classes. They're striking through especially advanced placement AP courses." They want to take that out. "And add, including advanced placement AP courses, dual enrollment, and other similar courses." And it goes on, "Technology and online courses such as Virtual Virginia can..." can provide a cost-saving alternative to school divisions. Virtual Virginia, state-run online course offerings has an overall cap on the number of students in the Commonwealth that can enroll in its online courses at no cost to localities. In addition, there are caps on the number of students that each school division may enroll in each course at no cost to the division. Once the state cap is reached, school divisions must pay for additional students to enroll in courses. The enrollment cap in Virtual Virginia should be increased from its present capacity to accommodate more students to participate, including advanced courses in a cost-effective manner." They propose to add this sentence, "That may not be offered in school divisions without qualified staffing." They're citing the rationale, "This legislative budget priority needs to be revised to raise the free enrollment cap that will provide additional flexibility to divisions wishing to alleviate staffing issues by using the state's Virtual Virginia program while expanding opportunities for the students." If you're not sleepy yet, you will be in a few minutes.
I can't recall how Virtual Virginia is funded.
I don't know that I'm totally familiar on their funding mechanism. I know, I want to say we get ten slots per school and then a certain number, is it more than that? Yeah, we, I think if, if certain classes have space in them, we can get a certain number of students into those, um, classes. But annually, we, um, we budget for Virtual Virginia enrollment costs. It's helpful for students who may want to take Italian, or we have a lot of students who, well, not a lot, but frequently students will want to take American Sign Language or just courses that we would never be able to offer here. I think this push is because of part of the accountability framework that's coming down and the three E's, having, um, students earning associate's degrees and enrolling in dual enrollment, A P, I B. There's some other category that schools would get sort of points for in that accountability matrix. But if you're in a, um, rural, somewhat isolated school division, it's going to be difficult to find a dual enrollment teacher, somebody to be certified in those A P courses. So having access through Virtual Virginia, um, is, is helpful. And then as enrollment sort of dollars shrink for some school divisions, for a lot of school divisions in Virginia, we're not alone, um, trying to find ways to cut costs.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Morgan?
I'm just going to ask a quick question. Um, since we do have another school board meeting, regular school board meeting before this conference, could I ask that at our next meeting, I can have a consensus of the board so I know how to vote appropriately on these proposals?
Absolutely, and we will take this information and we'll have time to process it, and we will have that, um, action point, unofficial action point, next meeting.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Moving to item nine point two is a reminder that we have a school board town hall this Thursday, October twenty-third at six P M. in this building, the J. Murray Brooks Auditorium at Thomas Hunter Middle School. Item nine point three, there'll be a school board work, fall work session on Thursday, October thirtieth, from eight to three at the Chesapeake Bank Community Room. Item nine point four, there will be a joint legislative tour on Thursday, November thirteenth, at nine A M. beginning here at Thomas Hunter Middle School. Item nine point five, if members would please review any board conferences and webinars, past and future. Also, any upcoming due dates for trainings that are needed. Item nine point six, Board and Committee Reports by Members and the Superintendent. Um, just want to, uh, reiterate that the Board of Supervisors meetings will be attended. Uh, I was in October, I will be in November, and Mr. Dobson is in December. I thought, perhaps that was changed. I've had three in a row.
Cause you went to one room there, I think.
Yeah. I believe in the minutes from last month, there was a change in that. Ms. Lau, I believe Mr. Dobson was going to take November.
I can take it.
I think, I believe it was in the minutes. We can check on this later. Well, I just want to be clear on, on what it is, whatever it is. Well, we can check this at a, at a later time, um, but for now, let's go with what is stated here. I will be attending November, Mr. Dobson, December. Ms. Lau, we, we'll get together later on this possibly. I think I saw some change, but we won't relay it anymore. Item ten, Citizen Comments on Items Discussed During the Meeting. Do we have any citizens who'd like to approach the podium?
So, good evening again, Amy Bohannon Stewart. So I jotted down some thoughts and things. So, Mr. Dobson, I would like to thank you for your comment on students needing math practice. I would agree with you on that, certainly. I made sure my daughter got her practice in, uh, when, when I was the parent of a, of a younger child. So, and I X L was really great for that. It was something that was used many years in the school system. Um, fortunately, when my daughter was going through the system, I X L was just a part of math practice. And, uh, that was done away with, um, last year. And, um, I have some reports of teachers saying that students are saying, some students are saying they miss it. And, uh, having experience with I X L as a teacher, as a parent looking over my daughter's shoulder, sometimes I was fussing at her for clicking through the explanation without reading it when she got something wrong. It was so great for practice because even if you were practicing at home and your parent couldn't help you figure out what you were doing wrong, it told you what you got right and wrong. And if you got something wrong, it would explain to you why. And there were video, little video clips available on there for, to help students get an explanation too. And if you got something wrong, it would give you a simpler version of that, a similar problem, but a simpler version. And as you got more and more right, it would make them slightly more and more difficult. And so, you know, experienced it as a parent, like I said, looking at my kid's shoulder, as a teacher, I don't understand why we aren't still using that, and that may be helpful. You know, I questioned, you know, some teachers, all the math teachers that I had in my phone. And, you know, did you guys use I X L, you know? And, and all of them said that they used it. So maybe considering re-subscribing to that would be a great way, um, to help our math students. So, um, also, I'm glad to hear some steps are being taken, um, for weapons detection systems and safety. I appreciate that. The school I taught at last year had that implemented a few months, I think a few months into the school year after I started at New Kent Middle School. First block teachers, um, and I was not a first, first block, no. Teachers that had first block planning had to help man the weapons detection systems. And I, uh, texted one of my teacher friends over there. She said S R O officer, S R O, School Resource Officer, was present there, um, as they were coming in in the morning. And, um, and I remember when they introduced it, they had an assembly for all the students and teachers to explain how it was going to work and what types of objects that weren't weapons would set it off. And they had some, some, maybe like an eyelash curler or something like that, you know, things like that. So they educated the students on how it was going to work. And, um, it, I wish I could say I observed the process last year, but I did not because I had students first block, so. Okay. I just wanted to give you guys some, some ideas on that, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Clark again. I would just like to follow up on Amy's comment about, uh, manning metal detectors. Red Lake, Minnesota, school massacre. An unarmed guard and school secretary were manning the metal detectors at the front door. The shooter came in, look where he had, had his, fought his grandfather's shotgun and a pistol. He had first killed his grandfather, who was a reservation chief, and his grandfather's girlfriend. He had both of his guns and stole the police car and went, and those were the first two to be killed in this massacre, were the secretary and unarmed guard at the metal detectors. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Is there someone else who'd like to approach? There being none, we'll move on to school board member comments. Mr. Dobson.
Yes. I'd like to comment on what Ms. Frye said. Lawyers took God out of the classroom. That's who took it out. I would love to see it go back in. Children today, with all of what goes on, needs another environment that they can learn in. And I believe religion is a very fine learning aspect of what life is all about, anyway. And if we can return to more of Sunday school classes where children can learn things, I think the better off the school system would be. That's my own opinion, but that's what I believe in. It sure did work years ago. As far as armament in the schools, we should have, now, I know people will get upset, we should have people packing in the school besides the S R O. They can't be everywhere. And I don't know how you're going to classify that because it seems like today, everybody goes ballistic. You know, you have, like, I'm, I'm a retiree from the military, but we got guys walking around that can go off like that in a second. So you can't trust them with weapons. So I, it's, it's hard to say how you would do things. I know when I went to school years ago, we didn't have any of this. I mean, uh, I had, Boy Scouts, everybody had a Boy Scout knife. You never heard anybody getting stabbed with a Boy Scout knife. Today, you, you just can't do it, people. It's a whole different environment as far as people. And so we have to take all these precautions with bringing weapons to school and people just being outlandish, I guess. Because if you don't, the first thing you're going to get, I heard, everybody says parents are going to complain. Well, they're going to complain if you don't do it. So you have to do it to keep them from complaining. What's the first thing everybody says? Well, there was signs that the guy was a little reckless and this, that. But nobody did nothing. Well, today, you have to take those precautions so you don't have people coming back saying that. And it will alleviate a problem if it does happen, so. I was always under the influence, it takes one person to mess everything up. And now we got so many laws we have to follow and so many different things we have to do to protect everybody. I know it creates a lot of work, but that's the way our society has gone. And if you go against the grain, you're just going to bring more trouble on. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Ms. Diggs, would you like to talk about the W H R O? Thank you.
I listened virtually to the W H R O, um, information last Wednesday and received a wealth of information that I will discuss further with Dr. Daniel, and he'll pass it on, um, to the principals. But the, um, the whole gist, or most of the gist of the hour program that was presented, was on Sail America. And this program has been, um, in the works, in the planning stages since, um, twenty nineteen. And there are five locations up and down the east coast from, I believe it starts in Boston and comes on down to Norfolk, um, where we will be having tall ships, as we've had in the past, from many different countries coming down to our different five ports in the U.S. And, um, the exciting part for our schools is that we have opportunity to do various things in, to participate in this. We can actually partner with a ship from whichever country. There are several, um, coming, uh, some Argentina, Spain, the U.K., et cetera, et cetera. They have set aside five miles of docking space in Norfolk for this. Uh, it will be happening, the, if there is a negative, it would be that it's happening when school is out, um, here in Norfolk. It's June nineteenth to June twenty-third. But it's going to be a huge weekend, um, needless to say, and just all kinds of learning opportunities for our children. And they can plan, it's no age limit. They can go from, um, the little ones right on up through high school in planning if they want to participate and how they want to participate. Let's see. There's an education center behind Nauticus in Norfolk where the kids can come, parents can come. They will have, uh, be able to come and visit by Zoom if they can't be there in person. W H R O, um, also mentioned that Ken Burns did the, um, an hour, a twelve-hour film series on Yorktown Battlefield. Um, proposed funding that had been two years in advance was sadly, um, nicked by the government. But since that happened, two point six million has been given, um, or has been pledged. So it's over the two million mark. There are all kinds of lesson plans and ideas for teachers that they can download from the W H R O site. Uh, there's even professional development and, um, just a, a great deal of things that Matthews County children can be involved if we choose to do that. And I certainly hope we do, so, thank you.
Great report, I do too. So many opportunities for V A two fifty coming up, want our kids to be involved. So that's, that's wonderful, I, I want to go.
Yeah, me too.
Anybody, any other member reports? Anything to say? Move on to, um, school board member reports, just.
I just, I just have one thing to say, and that is to make the board aware that we will be having a meeting with, uh, representatives from Boardable, which is an option to Board Docs, which is our school board governance, uh, management platform. And that meeting will be held this Friday.
And that meeting will be held this Friday. And then another meeting with the full board will be virtual, we'll have a virtual meeting with Boardable on the 30th at our work session. So we can learn more about that product and see if it's a viable option to consider as we know that our Board Docs product is sunsetting in 2026. So we will be changing products one way or another. And I would like to entertain additional options outside of the connection with V S B A. So that is for everyone's knowledge there. That'll be Friday, first one, and then next Friday for the second one. Any other questions, comments? All right, then finally, we'll reiterate item 12, other business by school board members or the superintendent. 12.1, town hall this Thursday, 6:00 p.m. Murray Brooks Auditorium, right here at Thomas Hunter Middle School. 12.2, our, again, our school board fall work session is Thursday, October 30th from 8:00 to 3:00, Chesapeake Bank Community Room. Item 12.3, the joint school legislative tour is Thursday, November 13th at 9:00 a.m. here at Thomas Hunter Middle School. And our next regular monthly meeting will be Tuesday, November 18th at 6:00 p.m. in this building, Thomas Hunter Middle School, in this auditorium. If there's nothing else? Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you for your attention. The meeting is adjourned.